You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 18th meeting for the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
I can have everybody stand to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November Town Council meeting for Trail Creek. We will start off our meeting this evening with approval of the minutes. And council, has everyone had a chance to read through those? So you've, okay, so everything's already been noted. I was just gonna say to turn your mic on so that we can hear you.
And Mr. Saints wasn't here.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the minutes from October of 2025?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So we've got a motion from Laura and a second from Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing. Moving on to the fund report. Anything significant that we should know there, Crystal? I know we've had a chance to review this earlier, so.
Uh, yeah, so on the MS four one that was in a negative. This report is from October, so it doesn't reflect it, but it is already corrected. So you'll see the balance of the negative taken off on next meeting.
Okay.
For November's fund report.
Fantastic. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the fund report?
A move to approve the fund report.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on. You can see the bank reconciliation for your information. And we'll move on with that to payment of the bills. Any comments or questions from the council? And Crystal, anything that stood out that we should know about that you wanted to mention? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills? Thank you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any correspondence this month? None? Okay, wonderful. And I don't think that we have any reports from MS four that I'm aware of. Mr. Willoughby, did you hear anything from? Okay. Then we'll move on to your report. You might want to turn your, are you on it? No. There we go.
Couple of updates in response to Warren's questions last month. One, he and I talked a little bit before the meeting. I did find some pretty old documents that show that there are some recorded drainage, stormwater, utility easements for the ditches that aren't otherwise owned by Trail Creek. So there is a section like Dog Park and all of those that own, but the eastern side of that, there are some ditches and dedication language. One from a subdivision long, you know, in the seventies and then the other Brits. So there are easements there that would allow you to maintain those if you so choose. So that's one update. And then the other is that we sent out the 10 day letter. I haven't gotten the certified mailings back to the address on Cool Spring. And if we don't hear from the attorneys as we, you know, has happened in the past that have managed their funds, or we otherwise don't hear at all, then I will, my intention is to get with Chief and Mr. Thomas and determine which citations that Mr. Thomas should write and send to them.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions for our attorney?
And what was, uh, did you look into the Evergreen, next to Evergreen Church?
That's what I was just talking.
Oh, okay. All right.
So the 10 day letter and then, so I've served that and that 10 day letter, the intent of it under the Indiana code, there's a standing order that says if they don't clean it, the town could go in and clean and then charge or lean their property for that. So that gives you one avenue and then the other would be writing those citations and see if something gets their attention. You know, obviously they don't want to have the town go out of pocket for cost, but that might ultimately be what needs to be done.
And going back to the ditches. Hypothetical, in 10 years from now, and the same discussions get brought up. How do we or where do we, how can we make that information more pronounced or, you know, so we don't have to hunt it up again?
Well, I have it, so I, my intention is I'll scan it and email it and then Crystal can have that on file.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Just like with old variances or something to that effect. So wherever that will be that wherever you're organizing docs.
Yeah.
I have them all, so you won't have to pull them in the future.
Okay, that's fine.
So that way we can have that in the clerk's office and we won't have to go through all of the legwork all over again.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for our Willoughby, for Mr. Willoughby? Uh, okay, so we'll move on to our esteemed engineer down here, Ryan.
Good evening. I've got several different updates here. Um, one of which is regarding the CCMG project and I'm guessing maybe I should wait to speak on that until the new business item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so besides that, we have 1921 Wellnuts Road driveway permit. That was the one that was sort of a little bit of a variance from the typical standards that uh, the council approved. On, I think the September meeting. But in any event, they, that work has been done and that permit has been closed out. So there's nothing else to do about that one. On November 5th, we were made aware of some pending sanitary sewer lateral installation work that was happening on November 6th. The homeowner there was able to connect into a sanitary sewer, the Michigan City Sanitary Sewer at that location. So we were asked to inspect that and we did that um, on November 6th and all that went in just fine. Um, I, when we were kind of doing that work, uh, it came to our, you know, attention that I don't believe there's any standards that the town has for sanitary sewer work. I know naturally there is not a sewer everywhere in the town, but we thought maybe the town might want to sort of just adopt the San, uh, Michigan City um, standard details for like sanitary lateral and sanitary sewer in the roadway just um, to have something as a, as a standard for that type of work. Um, so that's something maybe just to consider. That's what we use when we inspected in lieu of something else. And then also regarding the pavement asset management plan, that's just, that's information that has to be approved by LTAP. And then when you get a letter back from LTAP regarding and approving that asset management plan for the town, that goes to NDOT and that makes you eligible to receive CCMG grant funds. So we, we, at the last meeting, you approved us working on that. We have since completed all that information, submitted that to LTAP and also received the letter. So we've already achieved and met that December 1 uh, milestone, that deadline for that. So that is essentially done until we, the town submits another application for CCMG grant in 2026. So besides the CCMG 2025 dash one project, uh, that's all I have to report on for right now.
So if we decide not to do the CCMG in 2026, do we have to do that again next year anyway? Or is that still good for 2027?
My understanding is that the asset management plan needs to be submitted each year. But as we noted in the, at the last meeting, you do not have to complete the Pazer rating. That's the pavement rating.
Right.
Each year that can be done every other year.
Okay.
Yeah, a question, Ryan. And just help me understand the work that takes place that was down in, uh, on the Wellnuts area that people I'm assuming are tying in with sewer and water? Cause there's a lot of, a lot, there's a, it seemed like a few more new tie-ins that took place this last month.
Not aware that I'm getting referring to like water?
No. They're the water, regular, you know, water and sewer, my guess there. Cause I know the
Like a water service and a sanitary sewer service.
From city.
Yeah, I'm
Cause we
We haven't been made aware of anything except the, the sanitary sewer lateral connection.
Yep.
At 1929, so I'm not aware of anything else.
Yeah. Is that what happened? So when that happens, they, there's, we, what is, they pay cities feed, cities water bill and sanitation bill. And is there anything that we, we don't get anything obviously out of it? They, they still pay taxes. Yeah, my concern is that, you know, that activity is fine, but we should be aware of it.
Not everybody can tap into it. It's only that long stretch that can
True.
You know, so eventually we're gonna Yeah, and it's a few hours that they take it out. Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's kind of like we should be aware of it every time a little bit on that. Go ahead.
Please approach the podium and turn on the microphone.
Also, um, the day that that happened, I had a call down that way and going down Black Oak and taking a ride on the Wellnuts. I didn't realize the road was closed. I think we need to do a better job of
Yep.
relaying that information.
So maybe that's where the standard that Ryan has come then, so that we can have better notification and a better process.
Perhaps a routing list and sign off on, you know, engineer, police department, street department needs to know.
Fire department.
Who?
Fire, who? Fire department.
Fire, well, yeah, I would take care of the emergency services, but yeah, we had no idea.
Right.
It was completely caught off guard and fortunately it wasn't something I
If anybody's closing a city street for more than five minutes, we should be notified about it.
Right.
That would probably be a little bit of our fault too, because we, you know, issued the permit and probably should have notified people too. So it's a little bit on our part too.
Okay.
Well, so for next time that if it happens again, that there needs to be a procedure in place.
Yeah, maybe part of the permit process. How long there you have the street closed?
Part of, maybe part of the permit process is it's up to them to contact each of these people. Contact Ryan, contact, contact Dave and, you know, just provide our email. That's all we, we just need notification and I like email better because then I can forward it on to the particular parties. So, but, um, but also is, is that that same hole that they cut out just out of curiosity? A couple of years back that was never filled in, right? Do you know?
I do.
That one that JT started and stopped on?
Ryan, are you aware of?
Um, vaguely. I I saw something related to 1929 Wellnuts, but I wasn't very familiar.
I was just out of, just out of my curiosity.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, and we'll talk to you again in a few minutes. Uh, our park department is up next.
Okay, park department, I have a report from Katrina and I'll just read it cause she couldn't be here tonight. The park board would like to provide a brief update on matters and seek approval for the following. So we have a new member appointment. We would like to recommend Adriana Alander as our fifth school board appointed park.
Can you spell her last name?
Yep, right there. Comments, yep. And she wants to be more involved with the community and participated as a vendor at the Fall Festival. She came to our last meeting and has already provided valuable feedback and ideas. And also at the meeting, we're going to have a South Bend Chocolate Factory give back at the Lighthouse Mall, uh, the South Bend Chocolate Factory on Wednesday, December 17th from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Uh, they set a date for the Fall Festival. The uh, date will be Saturday, October 17th from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. And there was talk of uh, a spring celebration in April. Possible ideas include a kids only Easter egg or scavenger hunt, a kiddie parade, a bounce house, silent auction and craft station. And the next park board meeting is scheduled on January 8th of next year at 6 p.m. at the town hall. And I've already given Crystal a copy of this and that's all that I have.
Okay. Um, just out of curiosity, the Michigan City School Board approved Adriana's appointment already?
No, I gave all the information to Chris. He's going to pass it on.
Okay, so they need to do that first. Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic. So we need a motion to authorize Chris?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Adriana will get up.
That's our first, our first thing. Okay.
Right.
Our building inspector is not here, nor did I receive a report. I don't know if you, okay. Anything for planning and zoning?
Uh, nothing.
That brings up our police department. Please remember to turn on your microphone, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My apologies for my tardiness this evening, gentlemen. Uh, two quick things, the third one was covered. Thank you for bringing that up, Warren. Uh, trick or treat was an enormous success this year. I want to thank each and every one of you for, um, your donations and your participation. I want to thank the crew that handed out the candy, the public that handed out candy and turned in money. They, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. We're still at 30 gallons of hot chocolate. We could have easily have done 40. So we'll probably look at increasing that number next year. We were at about 4,000 pieces of candy this year. Uh, we still have some left. I donated a little bit of it to the counselors at the high school, so they have candy in their offices for kids that come in to engage the children as they're, you know, uh, seeking a advice from their counselors. Uh, we're also going to participate in the snowflake parade in December 7th. I think it is, forgive me for not having that date in mind, but, um, but it was an enormous success and thank you very much. Couldn't do it without you. Leaves, uh, it was brought to my attention, I did send an email to, uh, Jenny and to Dave about a particular house that, uh, I was told that, uh, somebody is bringing leaves in from the outside world, outside of Trail Creek and dumping them in front of this house um, for our street department to pick up. And I don't know if you drove by, I asked Dave, he hasn't had a chance to make it down that far yet, but they'll see when they get there. The yard's about this big and it's just an inordinate amount. There's a pile of leaves that would fill this room. It's just a massive amount of leaves. Um, I just want to bring it up that it was, it was given to us and that we will look into, you know, whatever we have to do, uh, based on what the council wants to do as a police department. So, uh, that's just a message to the public, don't do it. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
From you.
Any questions, anybody?
No.
As always, thank you for your support.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Moving on to our street department.
Right, well, thanks Steve. Appreciate the info on that, uh, that address. Got that email this morning and anyway, like you said, I've been able to get down there. We've been busy with just keeping up with everything, which we're doing very well, I think. Uh, moving right along, nothing to report, uh, no issues to report as far as the machine, knock on wood. Um, good crew and it's just, it's been going pretty good. We literally have been through town, believe it or not, but it has been over the last couple of weeks. We've been out, we've been through town six times total already. Granted, at the beginning of this, we're able to get through town or most of the town in a day, maybe a day and a half. And now we're at the point of, um, the mid-season point is, it's a whole different ballgame now. So just getting through a district is hard to do, but we're doing that now. We'll be in District Three early tomorrow morning. We still have some stuff to do yet over here in two, but then we'll be in three and working our way south of Cool Spring after that for, for the weekend. So, excuse me. Aside from that, uh, one small thing I was made aware and sometime last week, whenever after the snowstorm and everything, it kind of threw us a curve ball on that. That, uh, we took out a mailbox over on Edgemore, didn't hit it, but it was the weight of the snow that rolled apparently and, and took that mailbox out. I understand someone was upset about that. They apparently called. I only had one call I found on my voicemail and once I found that or listened to it, that same morning I went out and myself and fixed it because I had the crew out doing the leaf stuff at that time. So anyway, that's been corrected. Uh, I did try calling that person back. It goes directly voicemail. They do not have a voicemail setup, so it goes to nowhere. So for what it's worth, contact was attempted before and finally I just went out and took care of it real quick and got it done and over with. So I took care of that.
Thank you.
So, uh, besides that, I think that's, that's about all I have to point. Other than the debris, which I know I gave you guys, sent you guys an email, stuff we're finding in some of these piles. And that's just the last two days. So these things are things that could just shut us down.
Okay, and have you tagged those houses or sent notice that?
We talked, one of my guys went up and talked to the people at one, one of the houses, the near miss we had. About two by four, literally five foot, two by four, uh, before it made it through the tube. So fortunately that happened, otherwise that would just really mess up. And then you know, we find the bricks, we had a brick today, uh, we were able to get that before that happened. And, uh, and literally an eight foot two by four at the bottom of a huge pile that I believe is probably used to drag, maybe as, you know, had a tarp attached to it or something because it had nails sticking out of it. And some of the tarps still there and it was just left at the bottom of the pile. And fortunately we didn't have anybody step on the nails. Uh, we found it and realized what it was at, at that time and we stopped everything, moved everything out of the way and, and dig all that stuff out. So, um, that's, those are kind of the bigger items. Sticks, limbs and branches, people still try and throw those in there and, and we try to navigate, you know, try to fish that stuff out as we're going. So, but, um, speaking of the sticks, limbs and branches, real quick, I do have one thing come to mind. Um, it's hard for us to pick any of that stuff up now. We haven't any calls that I know of, uh, for requests for service to pick that stuff up. Trucks are now all but the one that's towing leaf machine are set up in the winter configuration, which is done pretty quick before last week's little storm. Um, so they're not going to really be able to be used. So that's kind of a done issue, I think, for the winter. But that being said, a lot of people have had stuff out there since we passed that ordinance. They've been, I think most of them have been made aware either by mail or personal contact as we're out on the, the streets. And basically it's my belief that they're, uh, they're probably saving that for spring cleanup. They're just going to leave it set out in the front yard until spring cleanup and then well, they'll be here then, I guess, and pick it up. So, um, just so you guys are aware, take a ride around town, what's out there. Addresses, most of those have been noted, but I mean, I don't know how you guys, you know, how you want to approach that or
How, how much of that can be handled with the chipper? And blown into, you know?
Yeah. Could be, I guess, yeah.
Some of it could be, because that might be one way to clean some of it up at least.
I mean, same point, may as well just go grab it and dump it out. County, the county, by the way,
Has changed their rule.
Rolls into a whole nother thing. They have a whole new setup on what they're allowing in that, the dump. So that can affect us big time here. I don't know if they've put anything out on their, I didn't check their, their
So I did check their, their site if they are still allowing individuals and municipalities to use the site.
They are with some restrictions.
Yes.
Like some people with the root ball, the large root balls of, um, either from the shrubs that they pull out or trees that they're, they're cutting down or cutting down to a point and pulling, pulling the whole root ball out instead of grinding it down. County doesn't allow that anymore.
Correct.
We're not going to be able to do anything but that. There's some of that out there, so.
Okay.
So, all right. That's it.
One question for you.
But go ahead.
So with leaf season having been delayed a week with the snow, are we extending that by a week, hopefully?
Well, yeah, we've, we've always kind of kept that in reserves, that extra week. I think we've done that pretty much since I've been here is we'll find ourselves either, yeah, where everything went really good for one year, I think, out of the last few. And, and we usually tack on an extra week there.
Okay.
So that's not a, yeah.
Thank you.
That's not even, not much of an issue. We'll, we'll keep on it and get it cleaned up, weather permitting, of course.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the, the foreign objects in the leaf pile. Something just for us, the council to consider, at least think about. Because not only can a machine be hurt, uh, but someone could actually get hurt.
Exactly.
And I don't know if it's even possible to, if we can eventually put a fine on it uh, and find those people that, those are not accidents, you know? But we have to get the point across that, hey, you know, let's, that could happen. Literally can happen and just, you know, someone gets hurt, that's, then we're going to say, man, I wish we would have done something. So I'm just, something to think about. Hundred dollar fine, thousand dollar fine. Hey, um, gets their attention.
Gets their attention for sure. I think that's something we'll have to, to consider and then look at for maybe um, a future meeting. Any other questions? If there aren't any, thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job.
Great job. Thanks for passing that on.
Okay. Anything for NERPC this month?
Thank you. Meeting, uh, next month.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on to new business, we have a new park board member who is present with us. And Adriana, if I can have you step up to the, the podium over there, make sure you turn on the microphone and introduce yourself for us.
And Adriana, I didn't mention that you, you can leave after this. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Okay, okay. Hello, my name is Adriana Allender. I am part of Trail Creek. Um, I am 25 years old and I recently participated in the Trail Creek Fall Festival, like Laura stated. And I was a vendor there and it was my very first event ever. And I can say that I personally thought it went really well. And I've always been part of a community growing up as younger where I lived. So when they had reached out on social media that they were looking for a fifth member, I reached out to them and then they told me about the meeting that was of late and I showed up and here I am. And I want to be excited, ecstatic to be a part of it because they were all happy to hear what I had to say and the ideas I had. And so I would really like to be a part of it.
Fantastic. Anyone have questions for Adriana? You might go.
What's your address? Uh, 106 Starling Drive.
You took my question. So you're interested just to be a part of a community and being more active?
Absolutely, yes.
Fantastic. And what professional experience do you have?
Not really any.
But you were a vendor, a craft vendor.
Yeah, I just started up doing this, um, in April. And then, like I said, I just participated in the event recently. That was my first one. So I'm just new to all this myself, but mentally I feel like this is where I should be and a part of because I've always been kind of like that, so.
I think it's great that you'd like to make a positive difference in the town and we'll look forward to, to working with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So
Get a mic. And so we need a motion to be able to authorize Mr. Willoughby to go to the school board and provide information to have Adriana formally appointed. But we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you in a second. Thank you. So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we can move forward with that and as soon as we know more, then we'll be back in touch.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. And we will move on with that to CCMG again with, with Ryan.
So got a little bit of an update here and some couple of actions to take regarding the 2025 dash one CCMG project. That was just as a reminder, primarily Johnson Road, but other, some other roads as well. Um, as you know, the last meeting they had submitted an invoice, but they didn't send it to us initially. So we didn't have an opportunity to review it and follow those normal procedures. Um, but they did submit that to us on October 31st, so we Um, but they did submit that to us on October 31st, so we reviewed that, um, and adjusted things as necessary. And we, uh, transmitted yesterday to the council, um, so a packet of documents for final closeout of this project. Um, they include a change order number one, which is the only change order on the project and also the final change order on the project. It does two things. One, it adjusts the quantities, the as, as bid quantities to be the as-built quantities. Um, which has a, a financial effect of reducing the as-bid price by nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Bringing the final contract value to nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Which is 2.07% lower than the original bid price, so that's good. Um, it also changes the substantial completion date of the project, which was supposed, originally supposed to be December 7th. But they were able to complete the project very rapidly and so the substantial completion date is October 7th. Um. We also submitted payment recommendation number one, which is again, the final payment recommendation, which we're making contingent upon change order number one being approved. Prior to it, um. So that's, that's a recommendation of payment in the amount of nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents, which represents all payment to the contractor. There wasn't any retainage because they didn't submit a prior pay application, so that's just the full payment due to them. Um, we also submitted our notice of acceptability, which is basically our, our statement, uh, that we believe the project is complete. And they've completed all remaining punchless items and, and everything on the project is done according to the contract documents. Um, and then we also received the, the maintenance bond on the project, which is in the amount of under eighty thousand, dollar, hundred and eighty, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Um. And that's a one-year maintenance bond, which, um, I'll talk a little bit about here in a minute. Um, but essentially we need a couple of council actions tonight, one of which is the approval of the change order. And then I think approval of payment to the contractor. And I have several other things I want to mention about the project, but.
Okay, so let's approve the change order first. So if we can have a motion to approve change order number one, which is the, um, final change order. Only and final change order to the, um, CCMG project for this year.
I'll move.
Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to approve payment based upon the recommendation from Hassan Associates. Um, in the total amount of nine hundred and three thousand dollars, eight hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
What about Crystal's? Us for the, the handicap?
That may be.
That's, that's forthcoming and that is something that, that will be fixed, yes.
Okay, so, alright, then I'll second it.
Thank you. Warren and then Laura. Sure. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that, I'll just follow up on a couple of other things related to that project, um, first of which is the, this is a project that received funding from Indot through their CCMG grant. So there's some remaining kind of administrative things that need to be done. I think you guys are used to that. Um, so Jennifer, you'll need to sign some things here over the next 30 days, which we'll follow up with after, after the meeting and offline. None of those things need to be approved by the council, so we didn't present any of that here today.
Okay.
Um. Additionally, when we were out there doing inspection, just sort of as a matter of convenience, um, you know, we were already out there. We did a little bit of, uh, surveying, GPS surveying, so we picked up some, like 64 inlets across the various project areas and four storm manholes. Um, and some other things like gas and, and water related features. So that's just information that can go into kind of a town inventory or, you know, become the basis of what could be an inventory for the town. Um, so that was just done per our agreement for inspection on that. Um, and then finally, just, uh, that minor issue regarding the striping out here in the handicap spots. They utilize the incorrect type of paint. They were supposed to do grouping with that type of paint, but actually that type of paint is supposed to be a different paint. So anyway, we, but that's such a minor item, we'll just cover that with the warranty that you guys have for the project. So that's why we were felt comfortable recommending final payment and all that.
Okay. Um, and so council, you also have in your packet an invoice for Hassan Associates, uh, for payment, all related to the same project. Have you ever had a chance to review that, hopefully? And that's in the total amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents. We'll need a motion to approve that as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we have, um, some invoices for pyramid equipment. And this was for, um, the leaf truck, correct? Or was this for the, this, these were for the dump trucks for this year's. Refreshing, if you will, of the, okay. Inspections all went well, everything was ready to go. Obviously you're up and running with both trucks. If you'd like to, you may approach it. No, so the invoices in the total of four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Oh.
Or, oh, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the second page. The total amount is seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Should be both truck.
And that's for both trucks.
That was a heavy repair on one of them. And then, yeah, that's inspections in the, uh.
At the bottom of the page?
And preventative stuff, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's an odd place to put that.
Yeah, that is.
But I stand corrected, so it is seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, obviously again, both trucks have, are on the road and ready to go and completely repaired for this year. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, payment of this invoice?
I'll move to approve payment of the invoice from Pyramid.
And just, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Except we have a police car, uh, repair invoice. From LaPorte Chrysler, um, and I believe this was due to, um, an animal entering a vehicle and doing some damage. That had to be repaired. And so this had to go to the dealership for, for repair, couldn't just go to our regular mechanic's office. This is in the total of eight hundred and eighty dollars and we'll need a motion to approve payment of this invoice. Thank you. You may.
Just for the wiring in the car, there's also a, an antenna that's an aftermarket product that, uh, LaPorte Chrysler could not fix, that it has to go back. So we might get a separate, uh, bill from there once he takes it in. I have no idea what that's going to cost, but it's a, uh. For the antenna to the mobile radio, it's one piece, so I'm not sure.
And how is he, is he just using his?
It still works, still works, but it's, it's not proper, so.
Okay. So we may see a second bill for that then.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by, by Warren, we need a second.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to resolution four dash 2025. And Crystal, I believe this is just for appropriations, transfer appropriations.
Yep, this is just transferring from one appropriation to another, just because, uh, funds were low in sum, so.
Okay, so we're moving from other equipment in the general fund to another general fund attorney professional services, eleven thousand dollars. Uh, the cumulative, cumulative capital improvement fund, moving from capital outlay to phone services for one thousand, three hundred dollars. And seed it from capital outlay to fire protection at two thousand dollars. And so we'll need a motion to approve resolution four dash 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution five dash 2025, um, also a reduction in appropriation. So, um, the cumulative capital tax or the cigarette tax, capital outlays. Um, requested were thirteen thousand and the reduction is the same. Any questions? We have a motion or a motion in the floors? Thank you, and a second?
A second.
Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have our salary ordinance. So this would be the first reading on this.
No, so this is, um. While we were doing our longevity, um, this year, we realized we had made an error. So this isn't an amended 2025 salary ordinance. Um. In the next page, you can see, uh, highlighted it in green, yeah, um, red, so that you can see what we're correcting. We had it as, uh. Sixteen, uh, six, sixteen, I think, years, I believe what it was, and it was supposed to be seventeen years and then the math was just off with the longevity.
Okay. So then we'll need a motion to amend this year's salary ordinance. Um. As noted here, as with the corrections. Yes, Mr. Attorney.
If you're inclined to pass that tonight, then suggest a motion to suspend the rule, given that you're just making that a moment amendment. Given that it's ordinance, if you want to pass it this evening, you need to suspend the rules, which is unanimous vote of all those in attendance and then a majority ask if you're going to approve it.
And thank you for that reminder. So if someone would make that motion first.
I'm going to suspend the rule.
Thank you, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then ordinance number eight dash 2025 as amended. We'll need a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
And a second? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, aye. Okay. Okay. And then we do have the ordinance nine dash 2025, which is the salary ordinance for next year.
And then what? So on the last piece of paper, okay, um. What we have here is, um. We had a request to up the, uh, part-time police. Um, that come in and cover, we're at twenty-seven sixty an hour currently, we're the lowest paid part-time police. Around in LaPorte County, so we wanted to up that. So in this spreadsheet that you're seeing. Um, what we did is, because we don't know really what's going on with Marshall number three. Um. We have a. If. If our officer comes back in January, um, we have his base salary, okay, with the three percent raise. But if we happen to have to hire somebody with no experience, we have that pay as well. So what you see here is. The amount. For each marshal. And then on the bottom, you're going to see what it would average weekly of what it would cost on these prices, on these hours. So if you decide thirty dollars an hour, thirty-two dollars an hour, thirty-five, you can see around how much average hours a month. We could afford pretty much. Now in the blue, you're going to see that would be. As if the salary was different with Marshall number three and then the difference would, would be with Marshall number three in the pink. So pretty much what I'm saying is, is if, if we. Are Marshall number three with the total cost of if that Marshall came back, that would be the blue. If we started off with a new Marshall with pay, this is how much, because of how much we have budgeted for. That's how much hourly. So it's kind of a decision on what you guys want to make and how. How many hours per month overtime is going to be used? Now, if. For instance, nobody gets hired for a while, then we really wouldn't have to worry about that at that point, because that money would come straight out of. The salary of Marshall number three.
Out of curiosity, how much of the salary from Marshall number three do we have left from this year that we can encumber and use for the same purpose next year?
Uh, honestly, I'd have to get back to you on that one, but, um. So far, we have not had to dig into that for, we haven't went over in our part-time. Um, budget, so thankfully, but it could happen.
Overtime, possibly?
Yeah, so if, for instance, they went over on their overtime, then we would just. Do a transfer of that. So I can't give you an amount yet, but I could email you guys with that. See how much, but depending on if they're going to go over. So far, they have not, thankfully. So I know we kind of talked about maybe. Increasing that to thirty-five dollars an hour, so, um. That'd be a decision for you guys to make. So I, what we would do here today is I would just fill it in and then. We would, uh. Make the decision in the salary ordinance.
Questions or comments from any of the council members? Nope, you need to turn it on.
Do we have an average of what LaPorte County is paying currently?
Do you know that? Okay.
No, but a lot of them, when we looked into it, were in the upper thirties.
So what's happening right now is we're having a hard time getting part-time or just fill in, because.
I, what, mine was, I was just.
We're putting, yeah, up our thirties and there are some that are paying more than that.
Okay, so pretty much Laura, what happens is, is when we can't find somebody, we're paying our own officers to work overtime, which is a significant amount more than this. So, yes. Giving this raises is definitely a need, especially because everyone else around us is paying a lot more, so. And it just comes into preference of what you guys would like to do and, and that's kind of how it breaks it down for you here to show we'd still be okay.
So I guess my preference would be to go to thirty-five.
That's what I was asking.
Anyone else feels about that? Are you in agreement with that? Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay, so with this, that would put our, uh, part-timers instead of at twenty-seven sixty in the salary ordinance, that would change that to thirty-five per hour.
Correct. And that would be the only change, other than, um, the only other change that we made to the salary ordinance would be with the street commissioner. And his quarterly, we upped his quarterly.
So that would change from one thousand to two thousand per quarter?
Correct, an extra four thousand dollars a year.
Okay. And then every, the council stays the same, uh, everyone else has a percentage raise?
Yeah, everybody has a three percent raise, okay, including the leaf part-timers.
Fantastic. Any comments or questions? So do we need to move to suspend the rules again to approve? No, okay.
Unless you're doing both right now?
Did you want to do both this evening or do we want to?
With the change of the thirty-five.
Sorry.
Is everybody ready to do that?
I'm ready.
Okay, sure.
So, um, if we can have the motion to suspend the rules.
Rules.
And approve on first reading, so we've got a motion and a second. Then we're going to move to approve ordinance number nine dash 2025 with the amendment of the part-time police officers making thirty-five dollars an hour. Um, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
We've got a co-second, all in favor? Thank you. It's nice to have that taken care of. You may, you may.
Had some discussion with Chief. I would defer to Chief to fill you in, but there was a pre-authorization from Verizon that has his name on it, that. He can't sign to bind the town, um, without your authorization. Quote, is that up for consideration as well? There was a quote with your email.
Sorry, each line, e- each line, phone line has a set dollar amount. That we would be able to purchase equipment for without needing a purchase order for Verizon. That's all, uh, that, that is, we're not buying any equipment from them. Uh, the other thing this document does is certifies that we're a government entity, so we get the government pricing. There is no commit, there, we're, there's no commitment, it's not contractual.
Getting that through and getting on the agenda, so. In order for him to sign, or otherwise we can cross it out and add town council president, but. It would just take a vote if you were inclined to add, um, that to the agenda and then. Allow him to sign, obviously, all of those records come to you anyway.
Any questions or comments on that this evening? I have no problem with that, because you'll be discussing and, and negotiating the rates anyway, correct?
Yeah, the, our, our rates already actually went down. This isn't, it doesn't affect our rates, it's really the biggest thing, is it certifies that we're a government entity.
So will you motion to authorize, um, our town marshal to speak with the Horizon, Verizon and sign the document as provided?
For that, yeah, to.
We've got, and we've got, uh, a second there, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you for doing this. Okay, any public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to clerk's comment this evening.
Do I have to type what, what Peaches said?
You do have to type that he abstained, yes.
Thank you.
Any council comments this evening?
I would just like to remind everyone tomorrow is yoga at the town hall at five thirty PM.
Yeah, just, uh, going back to, Dave and I are gonna be real close friends here for. On this ditch, um, just something to put on the radar. Uh, the, you know, we're gonna be talking about, not this year, but understand, but we're gonna do something about that. Also, there's a, um, just FYI, and I don't know if you know what's there, and I don't know what its purpose is. That, uh, right at the, again, the ditch, but where drains into the, uh. Near the highway there, right at the corner, south east corner, there's a pump there that's de-watering something. Little green box and just constantly, uh, very good volume of water that's coming out of there, so I was just kind of curious. Wonder if you knew about it and then, um, or if you have any idea what that might be.
So I know there is water coming out of the new housing development at Woodland and Paz Road. At that intersection, um, there's quite a, quite a bit of water being pumped out of there, so I wonder if it's flowing all the way down to that corner.
I know, I just noticed.
Constant flow.
Southeast corner, it's a little green box, you'll see it out there in the field, out in the grass, right near the highway. Evergreen, yeah, all the way down at the end.
Some of those that were working on that year before last, someone was out there and it has to do with, I guess. Whoever owns that, right there. Yeah, they were, they were out, uh, clearing that, because I asked who's, who's is that, because I wasn't aware, I know ours is on that.
Interesting.
And, uh, yes, that was a private.
Yeah.
Contracted thing, so I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good, that's fine.
So you and Dave will discuss that. Further, any other council comments this evening? Hearing none, we have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, so we've got a motion and a.
I'll second it.
Second, thank you all, have a great evening and happy Thanksgiving.